Good evening and welcome. On this rainy November night, welcome to the Town Board meeting. I'm Sue Crane, Supervisor. Would you rise please for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the fire of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's start with the Town of Red Hook Monthly Statement to the Supervisor. To the Town Board of the Town of Red Hook, pursuant to Section 119 of the Town Law, I hereby tender the following detailed statement of all monies received and dispersed by the Supervisor during the month. And this would be ending October 31st, 2015. The opening balance was $3,541,024. We received $159,016. We dispersed $428,017, leaving a balance remaining of $3,272,023. There are some budget adjustments that you will see in a separate file. And they are, in the General A Fund, you'll see that we are reducing revenues in the amount of $10,255. Those are reimbursable for medical expenses. We're going to increase revenues in the amount of $6,848 and reduce appropriations to $27,802. Increasing appropriations to $29,395. And the detail is all there for your consideration. In the B Fund, we're going to increase revenues in the amount of $6,054 and increase likewise appropriations in the amount of $6,054. In the Highway DB Fund, it's a simple $260 increase from the contingent fund and appropriating the fund balance for that amount. There is a $600 increase in appropriations in the Water Department Fund and S&amp;W Fund, and likewise $600 from their fund balance. In other funds and capital projects, you'll see there is $29,855 for the Capital Highway, and again, an appropriation of the fund balance in that same amount. Are there any questions from the Town Board? Is there a motion to approve?
No move.
Thank you. Any further conversation? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Sue, would you like to do the Clerk's Report?
Sure. Thank you. Town Clerk Monthly Report, October 1 through October 31st. Total local shares remitted to Supervisor as Town Revenue, $1,131.49. Amount remitted to New York State Ag and Markets for the Spade/Neuter Program, $47. Amount remitted to New York State Department of Health for Marriage Licenses, $90. Amount remitted to New York State Environmental Conservation, $1,327.51. For a total, state, county, and local revenue of $2,596. Pursuant to Section 27 Sub 1 of the Town Law, I hereby certify that the foregoing is a full and true statement of all fees and monies received by me, Sue McCann, Town Clerk, Town of Red Hook, during the period stated above in connection with my office. And I also have the abstract for October. And these are vouchers 19531 through 19610. Out of the General A Fund, $62,301.2. The General B, $23,556.21. Highway DB Fund, $25,167.42. SL Lighting, $2,178.70. SW Water O&amp;M, $4,664.85. For a total abstract of $117,868.20. I hereby certify that the vouchers numbered 19531 through 19610, processed in the month of October 2015, are an accurate reporting of the abstracts approved for payment by the Town Board.
Thank you, Sue. This is very exciting. And because it's not a very nice night, I don't want to stay in the sequence that we have the agenda formed because it'll hold you up. And I'm sure you want to get home on a nasty night like this. But welcome to all of you. I think I know why you're here. I hope I know why you're here. And it's wonderful that you have come out to show support for your friend and our volunteer. Kevin Mowell has done a remarkable amount of work over 25 years. And I've asked the person who knows him best, John Kuhn, to come and read a resolution. It is John who has worked with him for many years. I don't know if all of that, 25 years, I think, John. So, John, I'm going to turn it over to you and let you speak about Kevin and all his wonderful work.
Great. Well, Kevin does all the work. And on a rainy night like this, if the games were tomorrow, he'd be out there with the bro. We do have a resolution of the Town Board, and I'd like to read it. It says, "Town of Red Hook Resolution Honoring Kevin Mowell, Director of the Men's Basketball League. Whereas Kevin Mowell has been a lifelong resident of the Town of Red Hook, who has demonstrated a desire to improve the life of Red Hook through community service; and whereas he has served the advancement of positive youth development through athletics; and whereas he has served 25 years as the Director of the Men's Summer Basketball League, played at the Red Hook Recreational Park; and whereas he has been a role model for honest and fair basketball competition and sportsmanship for the young men of Red Hook; and whereas he has donated his hands-on work and professional expertise in recreational management for the benefit of the community of Red Hook; and whereas he has been a positive influence and energetic volunteer in the Town of Red Hook; and his service and contributions clearly reflect the desire to improve the lives of young men through athletics. Now therefore be it resolved that Sue Crane, Supervisor of the Town of Red Hook, together with the Town Board, acknowledge and commend Kevin Mowell for his 25 years of service and contribution to the youth and community of Red Hook, and authorize this resolution to be passed to commemorate this achievement. This dated October 28th, 2015. And it's signed by the Supervisor and all of the Town Board members. And congratulations." I have two other things to give to Kevin at this point. And I'll give him the first one. As anyone who ever ran a league knows, this is a whistle and a lanyard for when the referees don't show up. The director steps on and does the job. And the other one is, is when the clock fails. You have your stopwatch. You yell it out, "Ten." So I have that for you. And this is a little more serious, but I'd like to read this as well. And this is a plaque. And it has the basketball, and then the Town of Red Hook seal. Recognition of Dedication Presented to Kevin Mowell in Appreciation of 25 Years of Service as Director of the Red Hook Men's Summer Basketball League. Town of Red Hook, November 10th, 2015. And congratulations, Kevin. The Board won first. Proclamation and your plaque.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Very good.
Thank you.
I can hardly wait to hear this feature about Tilly.
I just did it because I love basketball. I followed my father's footsteps. He did the over 40 for many years. And I wanted to start something myself. And I was a recreation major in school, so fit in with my job I had for many years. I just wanted, we have great refs, great facilities, great teams. Teams that always paid. The only bad thing was the weather. Every now and then, Tom Harv has helped out many years. Rick, Nate, these are all the players that have played. I just try to give something to do and run something good. And I think it has been, except for first year, thanks to Matt Parr. Championship game is the only problem we've ever had. Players trying to, one of Rod Chantos in the front. Did you have a tooth? And that guy is the president of the Metro Nord Union. I would have got the job if the guy pressed the charge or something. Besides that, it's been very few and far between problems. And thank you, I didn't expect this.
Wonderful.
I didn't, you didn't really need to do this. I do it for myself, too, so.
Well deserved, Ken.
Thank you ever for coming out. I appreciate it. Awesome.
Yes, and thank you all. It's such a wonderful pleasure. Now, you can stay with us as long as you can stand it.
Look at the bro.
I'm delighted you're all. No offense taken. Thank you all. Thank you. So while they're funneling out, I think I'll just move into announcements before giving the annual adopted budget report. And I had a couple of announcements that I wanted to draw to your attention. We'll wait till the stands clear. First, congratulations to all the candidates who ran and were elected. Congratulations to Mickey Strowinski, the returning Duchess County Legislature, Robert McKeon, the Supervisor-elect, Harry Holgdon, congratulations, and Sarah Imboden, congratulations. And I wanted to just say, congratulations to all of the candidates who ran because it is a big deal to put yourself out there in your community and meet your neighbors and friends, and maybe sometimes not such friends. And I'm very, very proud of Red Hook for having a good race. And to the candidates, again, congratulations for your victories. I wanted also to thank all of the candidates and the political committees who are respecting the, it's really an unspoken election courtesy to remove the political signs. And I see that most of them are down and the town is returning to normal again. That's always a good thing as well. Wanted to remind you all of St. Margaret's Visioning Committee meeting. It's not a committee meeting, it's a visioning meeting of all people in the community who are interested in St. Margaret's. It's occurring here at Town Hall, November 18th, next November 18th, which is a Wednesday, at 7:30. And we're hoping to get input from the public about how they feel about St. Margaret's, what they think should be thought about for the future of St. Margaret's, and stimulate some discussion about that wonderful historic building that belongs to the town. I think I now can give the budget report. And I did this because I just thought it was important to sum up how much work the Town Board enjoys over preparation of budget every year. And before we forget all of the work, I thought it was important to get it on record. So here it is. The Town Board relies on our experienced, what we call Budget and Finance Committee, to initiate the annual budget preparation. And they consist of the Budget Officer, Rose Ryder, the Town Bookkeeper, Anne Conway, Supervisor Sue Crane, and as needed Supervisor Superintendent of Highways, Teresa Burke, and Consultant and Former Office Manager, Deborah Kuhn. The Budget Officer meets in July and August with department heads, committee chairs, and members of the Town Board, identifying needs and changes in inventory, mandates, programs, and anticipated expenses and revenues. Thank you to Town Board members Jim Ross and Bill O'Neil, who met and negotiated contracts with the Red Hook Fire Company and the Village of Tilly for town fire protection for 2016 and '17. Thank you also to Red Hook Village Mayor Ed Lundell and Secretary Patrick Hildenbrand, who met with Supervisor Crane, Councilman Colgan, and the Bookkeeper to discuss contract and services of the Village of Red Hook Police Department. In September, the Budget Finance Committee conducted weekly two-hour meetings to review details and modifications of the 2016 budget, including the impact of mandates, department budget requests, capital investment plan, which is five-year plan, anticipated changes in expenses and revenues, potential sources of new revenue, new programmatic initiatives, commitments, or, yes, commitments and grant opportunities, professional contracts, and personnel salaries and benefits. On September 30th, the tentative 2016 Town Budget was filed with the Town Clerk. In October, the Town Board held public workshops on October 6th and 19th. Throughout October, the Budget Finance Committee met weekly to effect minor changes in what was the preliminary 2016 budget. The Supervisor conducted a public hearing on October 28th to consider local law 2015 overriding the New York State mandated tax cap if necessary. Absent public comment, it was continued until the special meeting for the public hearing of 2016 budget set for November 5th. On November 5th, public hearing for the Budget 2016 was attended by the Supervisor, Deputy Supervisor Jim Ross, Councilwoman Brenda Cagle, Councilman Harry Colgan, and Bill O'Neil, Budget Officer Rose Ryder, Bookkeeper Anne Conway, and Superintendent of Highways Teresa Burke. Also in attendance was Supervisor-elect Robert McKeon. The public hearing was open. Following note, public comment, Town Board voted unanimously to close the public hearing. The Town Bookkeeper filed the 2016 Town Budget with the State Controller, which is necessary before the Board voted to adopt. And when that was achieved, the Town Board voted unanimously to adopt the Town Budget of the Red Hook 2016 Budget on November 5th at 8:00 p.m. The meeting was closed with no action taken on the override. It was not necessary. Excuse me. Copies of the Town of Red Hook Budget 2016 are available on the Town's website. And we have for your, if you have Town Board any comments, I asked Linda to make the summary pages available for you to make it easy for us to discuss anything or make it easier for you to make comments about this budget. And I would welcome any observations or discussion you had at this time. The issue of the tax cap came up, and we were well under the tax cap. Well under, we were under it. It wasn't that much.
In spite of the tax cap being lower than the cost of living or inflation increases in a refund?
I believe it's a very good budget. I believe that we're going into the next year well-prepared for what we see on the horizon. We can't anticipate everything. But I believe that we have in Town Hall people who understand their work and do it well. And I think you all agree with that, having worked with them for some time. And this will be a budget that the Board, the new Board, can work with and will be comfortable with. So I thank you all for your work on it and for the long hours that we spent in consideration of it in order to do it justice. Are there any comments? Hearing none. I had an announcement that came by way of the Chamber of Commerce that I think is worth mentioning because it's such an opportunity for the community. The November Chamber Breakfast will be at Northern Duchess Hospital on November 17th in the Cafeteria Conference Room. And it's to celebrate the tour of the new addition to Northern Duchess Hospital. It's an 87,000-square-foot addition and offers modernly designed and rich amenities, new private rooms and bathrooms for patients, accommodations for family members, and so forth. State-of-the-art operating rooms. And tours will be available after that breakfast. So anyone wishing to attend should contact Sarah Bradshaw, S. Bradshaw, at Health Quest, or call 871-1720 and sign up. Breakfast attendees may use free valet parking. And I think it's going to be a great meeting. And those of you who have not had a chance to see that new addition, I think you'll be glad that you live in this community. I also wanted to announce that we received a letter yesterday from Bridget Barclay of Duchess County Water and Wastewater. And I think, maybe I'll read it just because it's easier to do. "We have completed our preliminary budgets for 2016 for the Rokeby Water System and the Fairways Water and Sewer Systems. Enclosed for your review are copies of the proposed rate schedules and operating budgets. Rokeby customers will see a .21% rate increase. Rokeby Water System has a two-tiered rate, and for 2016 would be as follows. The base rate of $84.96, or $9.44 per 1,000 gallons for up to 9,000 gallons. 9,000 to 25,000 gallons would be charged $9.44, and amounts exceeding 25,000 would be charged at $11.27 per 1,000 gallons. Fairways Water customers will see a .58% increase. Water rates would increase to $5.23 per 1,000 gallons, with no change to monthly service charge. This results in a .16 increase in the annual cost to a typical customer. Fairways Sewer customers will be charged a rate of $33.08 per month, or $396.96 annually. This represents a .24% increase over the 2015 rates. As part of the authority rules and regulations which became effective January 1, 2013, when service is switched off at the curb, either by customer request or authority action, the customer will continue to be responsible for all monthly service charges, Fairways Water, or the full minimum charge per billing period at Rokeby. Here's the part that customers in those water systems should note. A public hearing to receive comments on the 2016 proposed rate for these systems will be held at the offices of Duchess County Water and Wastewater Authority on Wednesday, November 18th, at 27 High Street in Poughkeepsie at 3:40 p.m. The Duchess County Water and Wastewater Authority staff will be available upon request to meet with you and other local representatives prior to hearing, to discuss, prior to the hearing, to discuss the proposed rates. If interested, please schedule an appointment through the receptionist Jackie Berger at 4863601. Interested parties may appear at the hearing in person or by agents. All written communications addressed to the Authority pertaining to the proposed rates must be received by the Authority on or before 3:00 p.m. on November 18th. Copies of the public hearing notice, the proposed 2016 rate schedules, and system budgets will be posted on the Authority's website, www.dcwa.org, for public review within the next few days. And that was signed from the Executive Director of Duchess County Water and Wastewater, Bridget Barclay. So that's a week from tomorrow will be that public hearing, 27 High Street. And I wanted to draw attention to a silver award ceremony that is celebrated every year for 7th and 8th grade Girl Scouts who are honored for their achievements in Girl Scouting. And I believe that it sets them on the path for lifelong leadership and perhaps the highest award in Girl Scouting, which is the Gold Award. And they will be celebrated on Saturday, November 21st, from 1:00 to 4:00 p.m. at the Paramount Hudson Valley Theater in Peekskill. That's at 1008 Brown Street. And I imagine that girls from all over Duchess County will be there with their families to be honored. And we're very, very proud that that's going on. And congratulations to Duchess County Girl Scouting. And that's what I have for announcements. And I guess I'll start with Jim Ross and ask you if you have any.
No, I don't, Sue. I just have one question about the Duchess Water and Wastewater Authority. You know, they spoke about the Rokeby system. Is that per billing cycle? And what's the billing cycle? The only thing, billing cycle they mentioned was the sewer fee at Fairways, which was $33.08 per month.
The billing periods are November 1 to, let's see, November 1 to January 31, February 1 to April 30, May 1 to July 30.
Well, it's a quarterly billing cycle.
So it's a quarterly billing.
Okay, yeah. The letter wasn't very clear.
I'm sorry. It's in the attachments.
Yeah.
You have to sort of tease it out. And we can make this available to residents at your office, Sue?
Yes.
If anyone asks a command about it?
Sure.
Thank you.
I would hope that Duchess County had sent it to the users there. I might hope so.
It's addressed to me. I, you're certainly welcome to call. Bridgette and... I, you're certainly welcome to call, Bridget, and ask her to do that, I suppose.
This part of it.
Yeah. I suppose that they do, but honestly, it doesn't say that.
Generally, a rates notice would be published rather than being mailed. So it would be normal to publish it. And so providing an extra copy to the town, perhaps to put on the website would be preferable as an assistant.
Yeah. It says that the rate schedules and system budgets will be posted on the authority's website for public review. And that was as of November 6th when the letter was written, so I'm sure it's up by now. But do you want to contact Bridget and see if she wants to post this?
Sure.
Let's find out from her. Thank you, Sue. That would be great. For those customers that are Red Hook residents, that may be an easier way for them to find it.
Or maybe it's easier.
Yeah. Or we can publish at least the email address, you know. Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Public comment period. Is there any public comment? No? Anyone? All the excitement left the room. Okay. We'll move right in then to the agenda. You have behind tab two, you have a resolution authorizing addition of roads for the yearly update of local highway inventory for the New York State Department of Transportation and a resolution that is attached to it. And Harry, I wonder if you would read that resolution for us.
Sure.
Highways being your assignment.
Whereas the highway superintendent updates yearly the town's local highway inventory for New York State Department of Transportation. And whereas the highway superintendent has updated her inventory to include the road sections as follows: James Court from Hateman Hill Road to the Dead End, Cedar Drive from Evergreen Lane to the Dead End, Chestnut Street, Aspenville Wall Road to Alvey Road, Willard Road to Echo Valley Road, Echo, Blue Echo Road to the Village Line, Worlick Road to Route 199, and North Drive to Manor Road. These are all very short distances that essentially boil down to corrections in the length of those roads as had historically been recorded. Now therefore be it resolved that the Town Board of the Town of Red Hook has hereby authorize and direct the supervisor of the Town of Red Hook to acknowledge to New York State Department of Transportation responsibility for the operation and maintenance of the above referenced roads or portions thereof. So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion regarding the resolution here now?
Significant amount of roads.
It's a significant.
Couple miles.
A number of roads and I guess it adds up to a mile and quarter or something. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay. The next item has also to do with the Highway Department. It has to do with going out to bid, and I think you know that we have done so, for ice control abrasives, hot mix asphalt, tree removal, and material bids that are attached in a spreadsheet form made available by way of Teresa's November 10th memo to us. And her recommendations are based on those. Jim, I wonder if you, because you're familiar with some of this, I wonder if you would take reading of these resolutions until you're exhausted. Maybe you won't be exhausted.
I can certainly read. So this is, I'll start with the ice control abrasives for Highway Department purposes, okay?
Thank you.
Whereas sealed bids for various highway materials and services for 2016, including ice control abrasives, were publicly opened and read on October 22nd, 2015 after due notice pursuant to Section 103 of the General Municipal Law with bids being received for such material from A. Colaruso &amp; Son Incorporated, Red Wing Properties Incorporated, Calanan Industries, Inc., Peckham Industries, Inc., and Ellenville Sand and Gravel as shown on the attached bid tabulation after taking into account the location and FOB price of the product at the place and time and the quantities anticipated to be needed for the calendar year 2016. And whereas the highway superintendent has determined that the bid of Red Wing Properties, Inc. is the lowest responsible bid for such materials as set forth on such bid tabulation. Whereas the highway superintendent has determined that such bid is not in excess of the available contract price for such materials through the State Office of General Services. And whereas the town highway superintendent has recommended award of the bid to such bidder. And now therefore be it resolved that the Town Board of the Town of Red Hook has hereby authorized the highway superintendent to accept following the foregoing bid and to purchase ice control abrasives as needed from time to time for general highway maintenance purposes at said prices from Red Wing Properties, Inc. for the 2016 calendar year with an applicable budgetary authority. I guess I'll move that.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
And we've got the charts, the breakdown of all the bids and stuff too on another page, I've noticed again.
And if I could just note that, Sue, that should become a part of the resolution, that chart that's attached to the resolution.
The tabulation that shows all the bid prices.
And does the memo from Teresa also become part of that record?
It could become part of the record, but the resolution, I just want to make sure that the resolution record has those charts.
Right.
They're the same chart.
They all do, yeah. Okay.
The amount, well, that's why the chart has to be attached to the resolution. It's incorporated in and attached, you know, as part of the resolution. And so we have this, the bid tabulation and the adjusted price of 9.45, which is the, well, the FOB price is $8 actually. So the 9.45, just to explain how the charts work, is the adjusted price that she used to determine the comparative, to compare apples and apples across the plants which are located in different locations. And so she made those calculations, but when she actually gets materials, she would use either the FOB price or the delivered price depending on what's convenient for that particular time. But that's the, that's why the chart needs to be, needs to stay with the resolution, because that's what she'll use. Okay?
I want to add the other one so I can see that we obviously picked the lowest responsible bidder.
Right. So you can see the bid tab, which is right.
Moving on, Sue, one minute.
Yes, that would be great.
Did we vote on that one or are you going to go?
I thought we did. Didn't we?
Yes, you did.
We did. I have a short memory.
I wasn't sure either, Harry. Authorizing the purchase of hot mix asphalt for Highway Department purposes for 2016. Whereas sealed bids for various highway materials and services for 2016, including various grades of blacktop hot mix asphalt, were publicly opened and read on October 22nd, 2015 after due notice pursuant to Section 103 of the General Municipal Law with bids being received from A. Colaruso &amp; Son Incorporated, Calanan Industries Incorporated, and Peckham Industries Incorporated as shown on the attached bid tabulation after taking into account the location and FOB price of the product at the place and time with the quantities anticipated to be needed for the calendar year 2016. And whereas the highway superintendent has determined that the bid of A. Colaruso &amp; Son Incorporated is the lowest responsible bid for dense base, dense binder, shim, top one half, and top one quarter armor coat as set forth on such bid tabulation. And whereas the highway superintendent has determined that each such bid is not in excess of the available contract price for such materials through the State Office of General Services. And whereas the highway, town highway superintendent has recommended award of the bids to such bidders. And now therefore be it resolved that the Town Board of the Town of Red Hook does hereby authorize the highway superintendent to accept the foregoing bids and to purchase blacktop material, hot mix asphalt, as needed from time to time for general highway maintenance purposes at said prices for dense base, dense binder, shim, top one half, and top one quarter armor coat from A. Colaruso &amp; Son, Inc. for the 2016 calendar year within applicable budgetary authority. So move.
Second. Is there any further discussion?
I might just add that that, obviously, table will be included with this as well.
Yes. Right. Is there any further discussion or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
And I would just add that these two were bid through a public bid process with sealed bids because of the size of those contracts. And the remaining bids that you're going to be looking at are, it was an RFP process. And in fact, the recommended bids are low bids, but there was a slight difference in
Okay. Moving on.
Great. Thank you.
Authorizing the purchase of road services and materials pursuant to town procurement policy for 2016. Whereas proposals for various highway materials and services for 2016 as listed below were publicly opened and read on October 22nd, 2015 after due notice in accordance with the town's procurement policy. And whereas the highway superintendent has received the proposals shown in the attached tabulation for the materials indicated. And whereas the highway superintendent has determined that the proposals for the following products from the indicated vendors represent the least cost to the town after taking into account the location and FOB price of the product at the place and time when the quantities anticipated to be needed for the calendar year 2016. I'll just read through that quickly then, Sue.
Yes.
Number one, topsoil, Red Wing Properties. Number two, crushed stone, 1A, 1/4 screenings, stone dust, screen fill, 1-inch minus, rip wrap, medium to heavy stone, gabion, light stone fill, fine stone fill, A. Colaruso &amp; Son. Number three, crushed stone number one, which is 3/8s, number two, 3/4s, number one and two mixed, 3/8 and 3/4, number three, 1 1/2. Item four, 2-inch minus, minus, rather, crushed run and surged stone, 8-inch minus, Calanan Industries. Number four, gravel, washed gravel, number three, 1 1/2. Commercial item four, cobbles, tailings, ice control sand washed, Red Wing Properties Incorporated. Number five, gravel, washed gravel stone, number two, 3/4, washed gravel stone, number one, 3/8s, washed gravel, 1A, 1/4, bank run gravel, A. Colaruso &amp; Son Incorporated. Six, all types of cold mix patch and curb mix, A. Colaruso &amp; Son. Seven, broom truck and operator for tree removal, integral tree and landscape. Now therefore be it resolved that the Town Board of the Town of Red Hook does hereby authorize the highway superintendent to accept the foregoing proposals for the calendar year 2016 and to purchase materials for general highway maintenance purposes from time to time as needed for the, from the foregoing vendors at the price stated for the indicated materials set forth in the attached schedules within applicable budgetary authority. So move.
Second. Thank you. Is there any question, further discussion, conversation, concerns? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. And that too, I'm sure we'll have the entire packet attached to that resolution.
She did a great job with that spreadsheet.
Yes.
She did. It's a remarkable amount of work.
Very clear.
Very clear. Answers anyone's questions. And Chris, thank you for the resolutions. I think you all can see why I didn't monterate that. Rip wrap, I would stumble on rip wrap.
With your eyes rolling.
I would have said minus for minus.
I always like to sound of rip wrap and gabion.
Yes. Gabion I like too. That's right.
That's minus.
That would be like the minimum size of the stone.
Okay. The next item on the agenda is for us to, having had this policy and procedures, copy from the business bookkeeper. I think we've had it for about a month or maybe more. The source of it is NYMER. We've had plenty of time to read it. Did any of you have any questions or concerns about it?
I just wondered who the system administrator is.
It is, it is the bookkeeper.
Anne?
Mm-hmm.
And then just a trivial thing, it says, talks, they mentioned supervisor again, you know, we're going through all these policy things, we need to change that to, what, department chair or something like that?
Now where do you see that, Brenda? Just so we are all on the same page. I didn't pick up on that. I wasn't confused by it, but do you all agree that that should be changed to department head?
Well, the department head would be the center supervisor, right?
It is. I thought we had.
Department head or the chair of a committee is the center supervisor.
Well, in some cases, I think it depends on how, I'm not sure supervisor is the right language. I think that's why you decided to use department head to be more clear.
For consistencies sake, but department head doesn't cover.
No, it doesn't.
It doesn't cover all instances, does it?
I can't remember what we changed it to.
You mean like department head or board chair? Is that what you're talking about?
No, we changed it in the handbook, but I don't remember what we changed it to.
Board chair or committee. There are occasions for committee members to use town.
Right. And their supervisor would be their chair. So unless you want to say department head or committee chair.
Right. Your board chair.
And of course, their supervisor would be the supervisor, correct?
Yes. Yes.
Right. Well, I mean, so in this particular case, what do you expect? I assume that ordinarily.
I think supervisor is okay in this case.
Should we just put, do you have to put IE?
No, I mean the supervisor of whomever it is that is allowing the use of a computer or providing a computer.
For a mass mailing.
To a mass mailing to town employees? Seems to me that should go another step further, that it should come out of the supervisor's office if it's, if it's something that is going to impact all employees.
Yeah, it should be filtered through there. You probably said. So big S in this case?
Yeah.
By the supervisors, a big S.
Strike out senders.
Okay. All right. Okay.
And just say approved by the supervisor prior to deleting.
No, I think that's right. Thank you, Brenda. That's a good.
But that's, you know, it's confusing. Is that all town employees? Okay, suppose we have a committee of seven and someone on the committee wants to send something to the town employees or the other people on that committee.
Well, this has to do with mass mailings though, right?
Yeah, but what's a mass mailing? Is it mass mailing to everybody on the, on that committee or you mean all town employees?
Well, it's going to town employees.
That means you're not saying that somebody wants to send something to everybody else on their committee.
No, no, that's not what it says though. It says to town employees.
In a mass mailing.
So in other words, if.
Committee members, that would be a separate statement.
Yeah. It's specifically to town employees. And I think it should filter through the, I think it should have the permission of the supervisor or at least author.
This would be all town employees. All isn't written in there, but it implies that when it says mass mailing.
Yeah, I know. That's why it's confusing.
Yeah.
So you want to.
I think it's better that the supervisor be aware of what's going to town employees.
So you just cross out senders and it's correct then, correct?
I think that's right. Yeah, that's fine. Anything else?
Uh-uh.
Okay. So Brenda, would you like to read the resolution for this one?
Sure.
With that correction.
Be it resolved through the Town Board of the Town of Red Hook, Duchess County, New York, by the favorable vote of not less than a majority of all of the members of the board as follows. Number one, the Town Board of the Town of Red Hook hereby authorizes and approves the computer use and email policy for the town and its employees in the form on plow with the town clerk. Number two, the supervisor and the town's other officers, employees, and agents are hereby authorized and directed for and in the name and on behalf of the town to do all acts and things required or provided by the provisions of the computer use and email policy. Number three, this resolution shall take effect immediately with the changes we mentioned.
Thank you, Brenda.
Second.
Any further discussion?
That makes it part and parcel of the manual, correct?
When we vote to accept, it will become part of the employee handbook, right?
Right.
We'll have Anne tweak that one last sentence so that it reads correctly and then she will distribute it to all of the employees and get signatures after they get a chance to read it, because this is pretty important. This use of the internet is to all business, a very important. This use of the internet is to all business, a very important-
Growing importance too.
Right, it's of growing importance and it's really important. Maybe we, I, I've even thought, and Anne wasn't here today to talk about it, I've even thought about having a kind of a get together of the staff to talk about it so that we bring attention to it, you know, as to why we're asking.
That would probably be a very good idea.
And I think in a group, we may be able to discuss it and it'll, it'll have some impact. All in favor?
Aye.
I forgot, didn't you?
We?
Thank you. Okay. I had a letter or an email and I've had conversations with various members, am I on the right, I have to check my agenda schedule. Can I?
Yes.
You're right there.
Here we go. Yeah, okay. Regarding building permit fees. We brought this up last time we met in, in town board and since then I've had a conversation with additional people and you'll recall that I brought up last time the suggestion by friends of a family who suffered a terrible loss of their barn and their animals. And in doing so, they discovered that the most recent and new fees that had been voted by the town board were felt to be unreasonable. That is to say that if a loss, for any reason, either flood or fire or whatever, were to affect a member of the community, might we have a clause or some consideration for fees in the event of a disaster? Reduce building fees. And it was up to us, of course, to just wrestle with that and decide how much of a reduction if it were something you wanted to do. But I received further, a letter from Chris Panetta, who is a representative of the Red Hook Barn Raising, Neighbors Helping Neighbors Rebuild. And he says that he was watching the Red Hook Town Meeting on Panda and saw that we brought up for discussion the permit fees concerned that had been raised in regards to the barn fire on Hateman Hill Road and he thanks us. As discussed, it is felt there should be some consideration given in regards to building permit fees in the case of such disasters where a similar or smaller replacement structure is to be built. It is appreciated if the town board would consider the following factors, scenarios for building fee, permit, building permit fee schedules. Number one, replacement structure permit fees in cases of fire, flood or natural disaster. Surely some consideration, differentiation should be made for pre-existing replacement structures in such circumstances as opposed to brand new construction. Secondly, permit fee schedule should be proportional to the type and value of structure being erected. Current permit fee schedule is solely square foot based with no consideration for type, value of structure. As such a simple structure such as a barn is disproportionately accessed, same building permit fees as a more elaborate, complex million dollar home of the same square footage. Surely a structure that is simply four walls and a roof with no interior doesn't require the same energies and time with regards to approvals and inspections and fees should be accessed, should be assessed accordingly. Current square footage based fee schedule results in disproportionate fees scheduled for types of structures. And thirdly, permit fees for simple structures erected solely for agricultural use should be differentiated from residences or commercial buildings. We thank you for current and future considerations regarding building permit fees. And then he asked that I advise when next discussions take place. Are you the author of the letter?
No, but I-
No, but you are concerned.
Yeah.
This is your concern?
My bar.
I thought it, I thought it might be.
And we've had all the conversations.
Yeah, I'm truly sorry. So, we had done, we had looked into, it's Mr. Chiana?
Sheen. Sheen.
Sheen. Reduced permit fees, we had talked about this not being totally unique. And I wondered if the board had a chance to think about it since the last meeting and, and just, and make any comment on what might be done to give consideration.
Well, I think we do differentiate over and some other things, but what about the response of the building department? Should they give some idea of what their experience is and what their opinion would be on, you know, where a barn has to be replaced because of an emergency? You know, we kind of discussed it in the, as far as when it's a disaster, I think, I see we have the definition for disaster included with what we have here, Sue. Something just a flood, tornado, fire, plane crash, etc., that happens suddenly and causes much suffering or loss to many people. And, you know, I personally think it's, it's reasonable, be it a barn or a house, should they require building permit due to loss due to, due to a disaster? I, I would think it's, would be a decent thing to do to make the fee, you know, 50% of what the normal fee would be if it was an original construction, provided it's the same or smaller footprint, you know. Now, obviously if they decide they want to build a newer, bigger house because they lose it, that, I would go along with it, but the same or smaller footprint in it, but to rebuild after a disaster, be it fire or flood, I, I would say, you know, it just seemed like the humanitarian thing to do to offer, you know, that 50% of what our normal fee schedule is so the building inspector can figure out the normal fee rate and, and cut it in half.
You know, I, I don't know, Bucky is building a pole barn across the street down, down around the corner of Rockabye. And I went over there the other day and was watching them, discussing it with them and then the process. And it's a very simple building when you compare it to a residence. Its, its foundation consists of footings down, a, a glove of concrete that's down three feet with, with a pin in it. And, and then, and then the poles have a hole in the bottom of them and they set them on the pin and they set them erect, right? And they, and they, they, they put a, they cite them so that they're all the same height and they're all cut to the same height. And hence you, and, and the result of that is, once those poles are in place, you, you have the, both the frame and the foundation of the building complete, which is extremely simple compared to a residence when you're, when you're putting in the foundation with footings, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. You have to accommodate the plumbing that's going to go in it and whatever. And then, then all this, you nail the boards on the side and you put, and you, and you use trusses and put a roof on the top. And when you compare that to a house, it's, it's a fraction of, of the technology and it would be a fraction of the world, a smaller, and this is new, I'm talking about new.
Right, well, that, yeah, but that's really two issues then, Harry. One is that-
Yes, it is.
This fee schedule is fairly new.
Yeah.
And right now, a resident, you know, a resident is 30 per 100, non-resident, which would be like, a commercial would be 40 for 100 square feet and a pole barn is 25. Now, I don't disagree with you, but you know, maybe 25 is even too much to begin with.
Well, I think that's where my starting point is. That's my thought.
Into a camp.
Is that the, for, for a, an agricultural building typically, they're super simple construction compared to a house. And you know, there's no plumbing in them, if there is, it's minimal, if there's electrical in it, in them, and we don't, we, we don't deal with the electrical anyway and-
So what have we for years though, had $25 per 100 square foot for a pole barn?
Because nobody complained and nobody gave a thought.
We've looked at it two or three times. We have, actually, did, these, these new fees, when did we approve them? Was it last year or the year before?
It wasn't that long ago.
It's been within a year.
This past May?
We've been, now, I think we've been asked to rethink it, what we've been, I think what we've done traditionally is we've had a 10% increase or something like that without ever considering the logic behind it. And I think maybe time to, to look at it from a ground zero point of view.
Well, that doesn't have anything to do with a disaster.
No.
No, it does not.
No, but it, but it also, it also, ultimately, those numbers, I think, should be lower than they are for, for-
I don't disagree with you, Harry, but I would like just to look at this disaster cause possibly now and then, and also over the next month or so, look at all the fees and rethink some of that, you know, because like even if it was a, a barn with conventional walls, not a pole barn, it still is, the inspection process would be considerably simpler than, than a home.
Much simpler, yes, yeah. Probably one trip, maybe two trips for the building inspector as opposed to a dozen for the house.
Right, yeah, yeah, because they don't have to go back and forth because the wall's going to be closed and all, everything else, you're exactly right, yeah.
Well, I'd like to turn your attention then to one thing at a time. Shall we, shall we do this? Shall we consider the question at hand, which is if a building is, for whatever reason, lost due to fire, flood, natural disasters, human error, it could be a plane crash, it could be a car crashing into a house and setting it afire, you know, there could be any number of things that could happen. Could we just take that as an element to consider tonight? And if you all agree that I think the suggestion of a 50% reduction in what would be a fee when disaster struck, as so long as the proposed building that is to replace is the same footprint or less, is a reasonable, is a reasonable consideration?
Well, if you're, yeah, it's a little, I don't know, about keeping it, that, that is an issue, because often, often the building would be, would be of a different size if you, if you, if you replace it. So, I, I think one of the, one, I think if, if, if these two factors are considered, one of them is, is that, that a farm buildings should, should have a lesser fee than $25. And then the compassion element is what we're talking about. If, if it's a natural disaster that, that you lose the building, then it would be, it would be half of that fee, whatever that, whatever that fee is, as a starting point for conversation, I would, I'd go along with that. But, but you would-
Regardless of the size of the building that were to be replaced?
Well, yeah, but no, the size of the building is a factor, you know, if you have, if you have a 10 by 10 shed and you, and you replace it by a 60 by 40 pole barn.
Right.
You know, that's, that's a, but if you, but if you also-
That's why you need to keep them separate issues, I believe.
And, but, yes, but if you, if, and, and they become totally separate issues, then if you reduce the square footage fee for a farm building from, and I just-
That we will consider in another time.
Yeah, but, but with, with that, in the context of both that, that takes into account the, the fact that the building might be, might be a different square footage, a different footprint. And then, and then the reduction because you're replacing a, and they, they destroyed building, it would be cut in half then.
Well, the disaster should apply to all buildings regardless.
Yes.
Not just barns.
Not just barns, correct, because you know, you have a disaster on your house, which is a common thing. And then as far as, well, you know, but you know, let's just take something real simple. Let's say we've got, you know, a thousand square foot pole barn.
Yep.
That presently would be $250, right?
Mm-hmm.
10 times 100 and 10 times 25. So if we lowered that to, to, say, 15, it could be 15, 20, if we do that at another time here, so then rather 250, that would be 150.
Mm-hmm.
So now they have to replace this thousand square foot barn due to a fire.
Yep.
The thousand square foot isn't much granted, but anyway, regardless, just to make the numbers easy, so that would be half of 150, which would be 75.
Mm-hmm.
And that, that still would not be an unreasonable thing, you know?
No, I don't have an objection, I'm just, I was just thinking, certainly another element to think ahead that-
Right, no, no, I know, I know.
I think there's two anomalies here.
Yeah. No, that would make sense to think about a lot.
But, you know, I'd certainly be willing to go along with some of that.
And before we lower the fees, we would probably, before, you know, which was what we did when we came up with this fee schedule in May, we'd probably look at surrounding areas and see if our fees are in fact somewhat in line with them. You know, regardless of the disaster clause that we're talking about placing on ours, but-
Somewhat in line with what?
Neighboring building permit fees for neighboring town streets.
We have done that, that's how we came up with these.
That's how we came up with it.
That's how we came up with these.
I, I know, but you know, since we want to look at again, we will take another look at that, but regardless of that, the, the disaster clause is a separate thing.
We want, we want to look at communities too, that have, probably communities in Columbia County that have a good deal more farming, farm building activity than say Southern Dutchess has or-
That's probably a very good idea, yes, because we're closer to them than we are to Southern Dutchess.
Yeah, yeah.
All right, so what is your pleasure?
My pleasure would be to, to pass a disaster clause and I think if, if this definition of disaster that is included with our packet here is correct, I think we just have to say disaster. And then you look up the definition, if this is a Webster definition, which it seems like it would be.
So if, if a building's being replaced as a result of a disaster?
As a result of a disaster.
The fee would be?
50% of the normal fee, provided it was a, provided that the, the footprint was the same or smaller and that the building permit was applied for within a year after the disaster.
Okay with me, it's, it's at least a stall.
Right, I mean, they can't go double the size and, and expect, you know, to do that.
Okay, so let's go through that again. The building permit must be with, within one year and a result of a disaster for replacement purposes, right?
Yeah, I'm just throwing stuff out for conversation, whatever you, what you guys say.
Yeah, I'm just trying to write it down because-
Who's going to draft this? Who's going to draft it?
Well, now, Bill-
Sounds right, now, we'll just, we'll just move on, right? Well, I'm not going to vote on anything like that, that's what you're right, seeing the writing. And also, I'm not going to vote till I hear from Steve Cole or Bob Fidel.
No, I think, no, I think that's right, but I think we have to tell Steve what it was the town board felt.
Oh, sure.
As a-
I mean, it sounds very logical and very reasonable, but why hasn't it happened before? You know, I mean, that's what, why hasn't this occurred to somebody else? Well, we've lost other barns and stuff and nobody's, you know, had to replace them right away either, I don't think, because Steve could give us a history on that. Yeah.
Pole barns get burned and they go away.
Can I just ask for one clarification? So are you talking about a total loss or lots of times somebody might just lose something and they're looking for a permit to rebuild that portion? Is there supposed to be applicable?
A loss due to a disaster regardless of the extent of the loss, right? Blue stores is being rebuilt, you know, have a pole burned to the ground. Blue stores is being rebuilt.
Is it?
Now, as, as it happens-
Which is good if they can save a lot of those old beams instead of-
I believe that typically in the case of a fire like this, don't, doesn't the insurance company, if there is insurance on the building, don't they get involved in something like this where they say the, the building is a total loss? That means the property assessment is effective, right?
Yeah.
And the insurance company is going to get involved here at some point to determine the value of the property as it was assessed or appraised before, right?
Uh, they're going to get involved with what they think the value of the loss to their customer was.
Yeah.
Right.
They don't care what we have it appraised or assessed for, really.
Then the assessor's going to see a new barn instead of an old rickety barn and, you know, that's another issue.
Yeah, well, yeah, but you know, any building you have has to be assessed fairly whether, you know-
And you're using the word footprint, do you mean that you, do you mean square footage? Because that's the way your building permit is written, or do you mean footprint?
Should be squared for square footage, right?
Well, square footage, you know, it could be a second floor.
Well, the square foot, the square footage of the footprint.
Correct, yeah.
Almost every barn has a halo, well, no more because they use trusses now, so they have no halo.
Right, and that's, that's sometimes it'll run the beams across.
Chris, are you willing to try to draft something that we can go to the building inspector with, working on, working on it?
Well, if we want to talk, Steve, we just started with 50%, Steve could tell us what would make sense.
Yes, it seems to me we should not vote on this tonight.
Well, no, I'm not asking us to vote on it tonight, I'm asking for us to have consensus on what we're, what we are suggesting.
So we're all in agreement, we're talking about 50%, let's have Steve look at it.
So, so what you're suggesting is in the case of a disaster or casualty loss, the permit fee for reconstruction will be 50% of the applicable fee, provided that the permit is applied for within one year of the date of disaster and the square footage is the same or smaller.
Right.
Or which to that effect.
Yes.
Exactly. I said the footprint because, you know, I suppose.
Well, it's different.
That you're darn right, it's different, yes, but.
But do you mean footprint or do you mean square footage?
I meant footprint.
Okay.
But, you know, that's, that's me, so it depends on.
Does that add to the inspector's work, adding another story?
Well, the only thing is your, your permits are based on square footage, so it might just be easier administratively, use the same factor, but it's, it's, this is completely up to you guys, so.
And most, many new buildings, replacement buildings would not be the same footprint.
That's right, unless they're really trying to save an old structure, yeah.
Yeah, but if you're, if you're building it, if it, if it, if it's, that's an important word, by the way, and, and you, and you have to rebuild it completely, the new, the new material would, would aim you in a very different direction if you would use trusses instead of, instead of timbers and whatever, it'd be a very different scenario.
Did you reach consensus on whether it's the footprint or the square footage?
I think it's a square footage.
Once again, you know, if we're all on the same page with around the 50% thing, let's have, see what Steve thinks and that's what we can talk about, is it footprint or square footage or, right, either way.
I'd rather give it to him one way or the other. Can we make up our minds tonight, or do you need time?
My only thoughts, Sue, not to play devil's advocate.
There's no one, one.
Saying what I prefer as footprint, okay. Someone due to a disaster loses a small ranch.
Mm-hmm.
It's total loss. They build a, a new ranch, they build a new one on the exact same footprint, however, they needed a bigger one, so they decide to make it a two-story home.
So what do you want to do in that case?
So, you know, that's where the difference between the footprint and the square footage can come in.
And if you have, if you have a, a good foundation, you're likely to use it.
That's right.
But if you don't, you're likely to start over.
Right.
Well, plus if it's a house and you do two-story, that will be more work, right?
Yes, it will.
Substantially more work for the inspector.
Just call it, it's the same.
That's right, so that's why the, the square footage base.
Your place is blasted by an emergency, you, you get treated as, oh, it's a permit renewal, which is 50% of the original fee.
Hmm.
That means it's got to be renewed like the original permit. Guess what, if you didn't have an original permit?
I don't know that you want to characterize as a permit renewal, because this could be, it, it could be a structure that didn't even have a permit. I mean, but you're using the same 50%, I think, but in the case of the permit renewal, it would be 50% of the original fee, which would be square footage based.
So if it is a building that never had an original permit, it burns down, what do we do?
Well, you're just going to say it's 50% of the applicable fee.
Of the, of the size, you can size it, but probably 90% of the buildings do not have permits in this.
Provided the, the footprint or square footage is no greater than the original.
Wait, she wants us to say which one?
No, it's a footprint or square footage, they should both be stated, because that will take care of, you know, someone getting around their permit fees by building a second story on their house that they lost to a disaster.
Well, do you mean and or?
The footprint may be the same, but the square footage is greater, so therefore they pay the regular permit fee.
Sorry, sorry, Jim, do you mean and or, because you said or.
Or.
But I think you mean and.
No.
From what you just said. I'm sorry.
The foot, the footprint can be no larger and the square footage can be no larger.
And, I think we need to.
Okay, so you mean and.
Whatever.
Yes, sir.
What, Bill? No, no, I just want to inject on something as the liaison and the ZRC. I think if and when we reach a point where we have a proposal, we should run it by the ZRC just okay now. Unfortunately, they're not going to meet again till 2016, but I mean, it is in the usual course of things, it would be something that would be sent to the ZRC and they would make their recommendation, right?
Not for building, not for building fees.
Well, for building permit fees and stuff, no, that's really us in, in speaking with our building inspector.
Town of Red Hook zoning and building department.
Yep.
Just so they're not sensitive, you know, they get mad at something, you know. I brought it up.
Mr. Shan, aren't you glad you came tonight?
I brought it up, feelings.
See, that was a very dull meeting until you came. And we thank you for.
This is fraud with unintended consequences.
Thank you for drawing all of this, sir, attention, I appreciate it. I, I think we're close enough that, that we have a draft of what, what we all agree and let's see what the building inspector says about this, the two building inspectors say about what Christine has drafted. I'm going to leave it up to your draft, Christine, because you're better out than any of us. And then we'll bring it back, all right? After we hear what he has to say, December 8th.
Yeah, we should keep talking about it.
December 8th.
Till we get a result.
We'll put it back on the agenda, December 8th.
And hopefully we won't have any destroyed barns in the meantime.
Hopefully it will be able to be voted that night.
Well, it'd be good for future.
It would be good for future and, and hopefully for all of you, so, okay. All right, shall we do that then?
Yeah.
We'll let, we'll let the attorney for the town draft a summation of what we said here tonight and go to the building inspector and bring it back on the 8th. Thank you for coming in and thank you for your, your good letter, I appreciate it.
Well, that, that credit goes to Mr. Fanata. And the next one, I couldn't have said better myself.
Very nice, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Shan.
Are you the green goats owner?
Actually, that's the people that have the goats in the barn.
Yeah, because you were here in time to see a large contingent of people who use our rec park. And one of the things that happens at our rec park every summer is poison ivy gets out of control. And I happened to think as I was noticing green goats featured in the, in the press that maybe we can talk to our rec park director about employing green goats for a few weeks.
Use a cune?
Yeah, yes, yes.
Yeah, and around, they could be used around the fence at the water tower too.
Yes.
They're, they're actually being used on a reindeer right now.
Are they at the water tower area or?
No, I forget where it is, but they were bringing it back from New Jersey and apparently they just, someone called them from down there and said the fences are all up by getting the spring goats.
Great solution, really great solution. And, and really, you know, we hate using any chemicals in an area where kids play, people sit on the ground with picnics and stuff, you know, and, and sometimes, I remember last summer was a banner year, it was awful. They just, they just were at it, you know, the men were at it trying to get rid of it for, for weeks, so I just.
It's a growing need.
That's right. That's right. Thank you for that. Okay, good. And that, I believe, is that, let's see, is there anything else? Yes, there was one other, there was a piece of correspondence received on November 6th from David Grover, and I believe it's in your package.
Yeah.
No?
Yes.
Okay. So I understand from Brenda that Mr. Grover, who lives on Baxter Road, helped Brenda with the tree.
Mm-hmm, yeah, they, the tree committee planted Wednesday with the, when the trees first arrived, they planted three trees, three shrubs, did some maintenance at St. Margaret's and up at the rec park, and Mr. Grover helped out. He's, he was recommended to the committee by a hobbit Kathy Michael, and he participated, and I guess he's involved in doing some of the landscaping work at the St. Paul's Church in Upper Red Hook, or St. John's, rather. So he was a good worker, I, I think he'd be a good member, he comes highly recommended.
Would you like to make a motion that we fill that vacancy?
I, yes, I will move that David Grover be appointed to the tree committee vacancy.
Second.
Any further discussion?
No.
Thank you, Mr. Grover, for your all the dedication and for your interest in the committee, all in favor?
Aye.
All in. Thank you, that's great. And we will contact him and let him, he's duly qualified, volunteers are coming full So that's all I have, and is there any further public comment before we?
We didn't hit those other agenda items.
Do we have six, oh, Bill, did I skip right on by you?
Yeah, we're seeing here with all sorts of.
He wants to go, Sue.
He was wondering why I just was so happy, and now I'm not so happy.
Well, on this dark preservation.
Oh, right ahead, Bill, thank you, I'm sorry.
Yeah, there are still stakeholders who recently contacted town hall, and so we are in the process of setting up kind of extended informational meetings with a stakeholder or two to discuss the proposed historic preservation local law, so that's going to take a little bit more time. And the Dutchess County Planning has made an inquiry, the supervisor, for further clarification, and that's being done by Green Planning, which will take a little bit of time. And so we had had it down for discussion tonight on the subject of starting ahead with seeker and/or a public hearing, but after conversation with supervisor and others, it's too early yet to do that, we're not ready. We're still in the process of, of informing those affected by the law about the impact of it. So we could put it over till the December meeting and see what the status is by that time.
Thank you, Bill.
As far as the agricultural fences go, passing out a draft resolution prepared by Christine Scholl, and it's, is the result of the discussions that have been had on the matter of agricultural fences in the Town of Red Hook and the subject of spike fences. And so it's something that we need to discuss further, and so it's not really in a situation, it's just been created, so it's not ready to be presented to the town board for final consideration and vote tonight.
If I could just report some information, we did speak with Department of Ag and Markets to get their take on some of these considerations. I spoke with Danielle Corrie, who's an attorney in that office, and she referred some information from Bob Summers, who I think most of you know of. And the information that we got was that Bob indicated in prior reviews that the need to obtain a permit to construct a fence on the property boundary is not unreasonable. The CEO can make sure that the boundary line has been surveyed or that the property boundary is known, so that there's not a dispute. The department has not supported the need to obtain a building permit, and, and this is in response to a question about building permit requirements, for interior fencing that is used to separate pastures, temporary fencing is used for rotational grazing, and a farmer should have to wait for approval from the regulated municipality to move fence to support this type of grazing program. So I think that's a very useful and clear.
Practical matter.
Practical approach. One of the things that we were looking at is in addition to the fence language that is in the zoning code, based on the recommendations, it seemed to us that we needed to examine the language in the building permit, the building code section, you know, we have a separate section of our code which implements the state building code, and the state building code itself contains certain exemptions for certain types of structures, egg structures under certain circumstances, you know, depending on their use and that sort of thing. So that is sort of self-implementing, but our code itself has certain exemptions for certain types of structures. And so we, what we have suggested is that we modify that language. Right now, your exemption says agricultural business, this is an exemption from your normal building type of current procedures. Agricultural buildings is defined in New York State Uniform Fire Prevention and Building Code, will be required to obtain a permit prior to construction, but will otherwise be exempt from the application of the uniform fire prevention and building code. That is what your code currently says, and I think that's based on the model code language that was adopted about 10 years ago. So the addition would be a permit will not be required for agricultural fencing that constitutes interior fencing used to separate pastures or temporary fencing used for rotational grazing. I mean, some, obviously that language can be discussed, but the language in highlights is, is the new language that is being recommended.
Can I get a copy of that to, to discuss with the Ag and Open Markets? Well, I mean, I would think I have to give this to Ag and the Open Markets Committee and also to the ZRC.
Right, but I just gave you one, did I?
No, no, I mean, your, the Ag and Open Markets.
Oh, sure, of course, yeah, here.
Because they always, you know, the formers would like that.
Sure, sure. So then the second part of this law would be an amendment to the zoning code regarding fences and walls, which the normal building code says fences and walls, pardon me, let me just, let me just get out the original version. Right now, it, it I believe says that ag fences have an age limit in the existing code. So this would change that so that it says fences and walls, except for agricultural fencing, shall not exceed six feet in height when erected in a required side or rear yard, nor exceed four feet in height when erected within the required front yard, except as otherwise specified by this chapter. And then agricultural fencing for purposes of this section has a specific definition. A fence constructed on a parcel located on the New York State certified ag district and constituting the farming operations defined in section 301 of the New York State Ag and Markets Law, where such fence is constructed for the purpose of containing or protecting crops, livestock, livestock products, and farm windland, as defined in section 301 of the New York State Ag and Markets Law, from wild animals or trespassers, or buffering the farm operation from residential and commercial uses. And then the other addition, which is in response to some of the other comments from the committees, no fence or wall or other structure in the nature of the fence shall be erected with a sole or dominant purpose of annoying neighboring properties or preventing passage of light or review to or from such properties. And then the remaining provisions remain the same.
So you've dealt with spike fences, you've dealt with definition agricultural fences, you've exempted agricultural fences from the height requirements.
What, the height?
And the building permit requirements.
What is the height?
The height limit was eight feet for agricultural fences.
Yeah.
And now there's none.
And now what is it?
None.
None, okay.
Right.
You have to account for animals that can jump ten feet.
There's no height limit, the only difference, the only, the only place where that, that is limited is corner lots, where it's necessary, special site clearance considerations are necessary for traffic safety. So even in that case, there would be height restrictions, because you can't block, you know, site distances in that case.
Okay, well, thank you, Chris, I think.
So hopefully, I mean, if you want.
I'll bring it to the Ag and Open Space Committee and the ZRC.
And the ZRC, right, for consideration.
Report back to the town board.
So we're getting close.
I hope by the middle of next year.
Not funny, though.
No, I'll, I'll send it around and let them work on it in the meantime.
Yeah, but that's what Sue wanted her, for her good bike.
Really? No, I wasn't expecting that.
Well, as, as opposed to our discussion on disasters and everything, this is truly not an emergency that has to be dealt with immediately, but the sooner the better.
Well, yeah, but it's been talked about for such a long time that it's now an emergency.
I would note that our, that I think our building department is cognizant of the guidance of the Ag and Markets Department and has not.
Yes.
You know, because it would be unduly burdensome, has not required permits for interior or, or grazing fences as a matter of practice, taking into account Ag and Markets guidance, as I understand it.
We haven't had that.
But nevertheless, not those.
Okay, so shall I ask again for public comment?